One.
All right, good morning, everyone. We are here for a joint committee hearing with the Committee on Energy and Environmental Protection and the Committee on Water and Land. I'm here with my co-chair, Rep. Hashem. It is Tuesday, March 18th, 9:00 a.m. We are in Conference Room 325. And first up on the agenda, or actually, a few housekeeping items first. For those on Zoom, please keep yourself muted and video off while you're waiting to testify. Zoom chat is just a chat with technical staff. If you're unexpectedly disconnected, you can rejoin. If you're disconnected while presenting testimony, you may be allowed to continue if time permits. The House is not responsible for bad connection on the testifier's end. In the event of a network failure, if we have to reschedule the meeting, we will post appropriate notice. And please avoid using trademarked or copyrighted images or profanity or uncivil behavior. All right, so with that, we will go on to the first bill on the agenda this morning, Senate Bill 1602 relating to the Kehoe Aquifer System. This appropriates funds to DLNR for monitoring wells for Kehoe Aquifer. And first up to testify is Department of Land and Natural Resources.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committees, Ryan Conocole, Department of Land and Natural Resources. The Department of Land and Natural Resources stands on its testimony and strong support for this measure, and we're here to answer any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. And then HHFDC?
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members, Dean of Economy, Hawaii Housing Finance, and Development Corporation. We stand on our testimony in support of this measure.
Thank you. And then we have additional written testimony submitted in support from the Natural Energy Laboratory of Hawaii Authority, Kona CDP Action Committee, Konokohala Chamber of Commerce, the Chamber of Commerce Hawaii, and two individuals all in support. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure, here in person or on Zoom? Seeing none, members, any questions? All right. Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. Questions for DLNR?
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that monitoring wells across the state is just part of what you do, and that monitoring wells is not a county level function?
That's correct, and that's something that is done statewide.
Thanks. Any further questions, members? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the next bill on the agenda relating to water pollution. This is an admin bill, just clarifying that enforcement of criminal water pollution offenses remain under jurisdiction of Department of Health and not DLNR. This is following up on some legislation passed last year, I believe. So first up to testify is the Attorney General.
Good morning, Chair Loen, Chair Hashem, Vice Chair and Members of the Committee. Deputy Attorney General Tricia Nakamoto on behalf of the Department of the Attorney General. We are in strong support of this bill, and thank you for hearing it. As the description indicates, this is essentially like a cleanup clarification bill. We had hoped that this would be done in last year's act, but I believe there might have just been some miscommunication during conference. So the conference draft came out with this language, which does duplicate enforcement language about water pollution in certain areas. We feel that Department of Health enforcement powers and the penalties attached are actually much stronger, so they're a much better deterrent. DOH is actually also better equipped to do the testing for those types of water pollution, and I believe that is one of their main duties in other areas of the state or the island as well. Available for questions, if any. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Department of Health in support. Not present. And DLNR in support.
Senator, in support.
Thank you. All right, members, or is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not members, questions? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the last bill on this agenda, Senate Bill 1074 relating to environmental impact statements. So this allows previously authorized or permitted commercial activity or operations to continue operations for one year while appropriate agency determines whether the activity or operation is subject to or exempt from the environmental review process when challenged, and allows a person with oversight of a previously authorized or permitted commercial activity to renew the appropriate permits while under the review process. And first up to testify, we have Department of Land and Natural Resources.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee, Ryan Conocole, DLNR. We stand on our written comments, but we do want to note that the recommendations that we've made for this bill are essentially aligning it to the similar language of the House Bill 661, which is an analogous bill. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I should have said at the start, for this bill, because we have a really big amount of testimony, we are going to limit testimony to, I'm going to say, a minute and a half. We do have a 9:20 EEP agenda. I think most people did not sign up to testify in person, but just in case, we want to make sure we move through this. And next up to testify, we have Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Not present in opposition. State of Hawaii Office of Planning and Sustainable Development.
Good morning, Chairs, Members. Tom Eisen with Environmental Review Program of the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. We stand on our submitted testimony that offers suggestions on correcting some garbled language, I guess, that was left over after some earlier amendments to the bill, and available for questions as appropriate.
All right, thank you. And then we have Hawaii Sustainable Reef Fishers, Ron Tubbs. Not present. Terra Lani Sailing Adventures in person.
Good morning, Chair and Committee Members. Thanks for continuing to listen on this bill, and as long as you're willing to listen, we'll continue to show up. You're going to hear a lot today from our business owners or people in the industry, and I'm one of those folks. However, I want to highlight in my testimony that I'm not flying over from Maui each time this comes up, just to say the same thing. I'm actually here for the grandmother that lives in Waianae here on Oahu, that answers phones for us and is at home, because she's taking care of family members, and she works remotely for us. I'm also here for the new father that just came out of some pretty shady business stuff and is finding his life now as a new father on our boats and working toward a captain's license and pulling himself out of that life, and also a recent mother who is able to stay at home with her child because healthcare is too expensive for her to go back to work. And the sole income for that family is also on the boats in Kaanapali. So this bill, if you would allow it to pass, actually supports the families of West Maui. We're not asking you guys to eviscerate the environmental laws. We believe strongly in those as well. What we're asking for is to allow these families to remain in Hawaii and remain at work with some certainty while we work through the process. So thank you very much for hearing this.
Thank you. And then we have Martin Hahn, Nokana Consulting.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and Board Members. We stand with our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Sorry. And then we have Victoria Takamine.
Aloha, Mai Kako. Thank you so much. We stand in strong opposition to this bill. It's really a Trojan horse that's going to impact the Environmental Protection Act. We know what's happening in the, under this current administration. NEPA is under attack. HIPAA, if this bill goes through, is going to be severely impacted. While it says that DLNR is going to support HIPAA, historically, they have failed. So I'm here to represent the monk seals who are starved, who are starving and don't have a voice, the turtles, our natural and cultural resources, the people of Hawaii, our native Hawaiian community. We're not against the commercial fishing that currently have permits that are allowed on Maui. This is not what we're against. If DLNR would do their job, then we would not be here. But they have overallowed aquarium fishing in Kani'ohi Bay. They have allowed starving of our monk seals, which is why we've had to put these environmental policies. They will allow commercial fishing in Papa Hanau Moku. So we really strongly oppose this version of this bill. There's a lot of other ways that we can do and support our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Ocean Tourism Coalition, Denver Kuhn in support.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. Denver Kuhn on behalf of the Ocean Tourism Coalition. We are in strong support of this bill. I did offer in my testimony suggested changes. A lot of what I've heard is just the broadness of the bill, not wanting it to apply, extend too far out. So I did offer some changes that included, you know, limiting permits to those that have been renewed in the last 12 months, permits under HRS 200, that would be the boating permits. And then also, you know, the idea of just putting in a sunset, right? The idea of you give DLNR time to do the necessary environmental review, and then this law would just disappear. It would solve the problem. It would keep kind of the status quo, give people that stability, knowing what's going to happen, and then it would go back to the full effect of the old law. So we are in strong support. Thank you for allowing me to testify. Thanks.
Thank you. Earth Justice in opposition.
Hi, good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and Committee Members. My name is Mahash Cleveland with Earth Justice Honolulu Office. So you have a written testimony in strong opposition to this bill, and I just wanted to provide a little more context, because as this issue and as these various bills have sort of evolved and passed through different committees, we've learned more and more about some of the context. I also really appreciate Mr. Kuhn's willingness to consider amendments to really narrow this. But bottom line is, this is a prime example of DLNR and their attorneys being super obstructive in this whole process. We've spoken in the past and in our, in our testimony about a settlement negotiation that is currently underway. Last time, we were in front of a House Committee, the department pretended not to know anything about it, but it's public record at this point. There's a judicial process underway. There's another court hearing on this matter, this Friday, in fact. And yet, as you see what's happened, basically, DLNR and the AGs appear to be using these boating operations as hostages to manipulate this legislature to undercut HIPAA. At a time when our federal Environmental Policy Act, we don't know how effective it's going to be within the next few years, this is not the time to be undoing HIPAA. So DLNR's amendments, again, trying to turn this back into the fishery exemption bill that was killed weeks ago or months ago. And so we strongly oppose this bill. We don't think that it should be used as a blank check for DLNR to avoid environmental review of fisheries or any other activity. Thank you very much.
And next up, we have Activities and Attractions Association of Hawaii, Antoinette Davis on Zoom.
Aloha. Thank you for this opportunity to testify, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and Members of the Committee. And I apologize. I was just going to stand on my testimony, but I have to speak up after hearing what I've just heard. It is true that there is a lawsuit. The lawsuit claims three things: that boaters are pumping offshore, their bilge pumps, that the egress, ingress does not have buoys, and that the commercial operators are having their customers park in public parking. And whether there's settlement discussions with the boaters from that lawsuit is of no, it holds no weight. The lawsuit is against DLNR. The boaters are collateral damage in this. And of the boaters talking with the plaintiff's, yeah, the plaintiff's attorney, is less than 10% of the boaters. So those don't make any sense. And this legislation was initiated by commercial boaters that are going to be put out of business due to HEPA. We so support doing an EA, doing an EIS, but because these boaters started 30, 40 years ago, EAs and EISs were not on our radar. It never got done. It is, you know, DLNR probably wasn't even in charge of it when that all happened. So it's futile to blame somebody. It needs to get done.
Can you please summarize?
So getting it done and allowing these boats to operate, it has, we have supported shutting down the aquarium fishery in past legislatures. So I just want to say, we strongly support this. Please ignore the side discussions that have nothing to do with what this legislation is about. It's about collateral damage that was not seen that could happen with HEPA and preventing it from happening. Thank you so much. Sorry. I'm sorry to take time.
Next up, we have Clean the Pacific, Recycle Hawaii, Christopher Dean on Zoom. Not present. Sailing Ships LTD, Gemini Charters on Zoom. Sands Dyer. There you are.
Hello. Hi, Vice Chair, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee. I just want to say, I'm the owner of Gemini Charters, an operator out of Kaanapali Beach, which was just mentioned. We are collateral damage. She made a very good point in the previous testimony. We don't cause any harm to the environment. We actually do the opposite. We educate our customers and our guests on the boat to, you know, do everything they can to not harm the reef, the environment. We even give them, you know, free reef safe sunscreen, and we do everything we can to make sure that people are not harming the environment. We are the opposite. Shutting us down during an environmental assessment or an EIS would put hundreds of people out of business, out of their jobs, and it would be a very big detriment to the west side of Maui, which is already trying to recover. So I'm in very strong support of the passing of 1074. Thank you for hearing my testimony.
Thank you so much. Next, Kaanapali Kai Charters, Terra Lani Sailing, Kula Rakadon on Zoom. Not present. Maui Hotel and Lodging Association on Zoom. Not present. Northwestern Hawaiian Islands, Hui Stephanie Freed on Zoom.
Aloha, Kakao. Mahalo nui loa for this opportunity to testify, strongly in opposition to this bill. I wanted to thank the gentleman from the Ocean Tourism Coalition who pointed out that essentially, the boaters are being used as a human shield to gut HIPAA. This is a DLNR move. DLNR could resolve this problem simply by dealing with parking, plans for waste management, ingress and egress, et cetera. Those ideas are not simply limited to the plaintiffs. That could be applied across the board. So DLNR could have done that in the past eight years and should do it now. On Papa Hanau Moku'a Kea, where we have worked for more than a quarter of a century on protections, the protections were brought about because DLNR generated public outrage by refusing to implement HIPAA in state waters of the Northwestern Hawaiian Islands, allowing a tiny handful of fishers to crash the lobster populations, et cetera. DLNR has proposed exemptions, and the chapters they propose are specific to the Northwestern Hawaiian Islands. HRS 188, 37, specific to the Northwestern Hawaiian Islands. HRS 189, again, specific to commercial fishing in the Northwestern Hawaiian Islands. When DLNR was asked about this last time, they stated, oh, well, these things don't apply to current situation. However, that's correct. There are no current permits, but there are efforts underway in Washington, DC to weaken the management structure, and DLNR appears to be planning to go along with the weakening. If those reserve protections for Papa were weakened, then now HIPAA would still apply to the Northwestern Hawaiian Islands permits. Yes. They're attempting to exempt Northwestern Hawaiian Islands permits under HRS 188, 189, and aquarium fishing under 187A. So this is a Trojan horse, and they're using and abusing the boaters.
Thank you. Next up, we have Sierra Club of Hawaii on Zoom. Not present. Oh, hi, Wayne. Sorry, go ahead.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. My name is Wayne Tanaka with the Sierra Club of Hawaii. We are in opposition to this measure. Our written testimony kind of outlines how it continues to just offer this open-ended permitting of commercial activities without any recognition of the environmental impacts. But I do want to add that, you know, the Kaanapali boaters who are, you know, who are trying to seek relief for this measure, they're not just collateral damage, you know, they're hostages. You know, even if we got behind this bill, it'd take months for this bill to become law. The DLNR could resolve the situation in a matter of like days or days, right? They have a settlement offered before them that would address the underlying water pollution and public access concerns that could be, you know, accepted or at least negotiated in an expedited manner. If you pass this measure, it takes away the incentive for them to actually provide timely relief. There's also other processes they can use, as I mentioned earlier, such as category exemptions. They do have exemptions on their list that could apply to the situation, and it won't take months to apply those. So, yeah, with that, I have to answer any questions. We stand strongly in opposition to this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Then Maui Chamber of Commerce on Zoom. Not present. Let's see, we have just written testimony only from Kaanapali Golf Courses in support. From, okay, there's a very long list of testifiers, which people will be able to see online, so I'm not going to read every single name. Skipping to people who said they would be present in person, we have Bryson Silva, Peter Riordan.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee Members. First and foremost, I just want to extend some gratitude. I know this isn't an easy job, so thank you for your ears and listening to this bill, irrespective of how you vote on it. I'm here today in strong support, and I'm here because I want to show you what an actual owner-operator looks like. Not only am I an owner-operator, I'm also a Lahaina fire victim. On August 8th, I lost my home. I lost everything I own. I lost heirlooms from my family in Ireland that cannot be replaced. My young children lost their father's home. They lost their mother's home. They lost their grandmother's home. This company is all I have left. This is it. I am one of 90 families, excuse me, 70 families that we work with that are suffering with mental anguish. We have not healed at all from this fire, and opposition to this bill to be And opposition to this bill, to be quite frank with you, is a foot on our neck, and it is compounding mental anguish and suffering to people that are trying to rebuild their lives, okay? I understand there was a problem with the scope of this, but to be quite specific and to the point, this is related to a mile and a half resort area in Kaanapali. It is not with fisheries. It is not with licenses for fisheries. It is the ability for us, who have followed the rules and regulations time and time again, to continue to feed our families and have clarity and allow us to live and love Hawaii and continue to be stewards of the ocean. 90% of the people that work with us went to college to be conservationists and marine biologists. Those are the people who are working on the catamarans. As you know, we were instrumental in stopping harmful sunscreens. We were the ones who were petitioning for that. We are the ones who are cleaning the reef. We are the ones doing that. We are collateral damage. You know, and I'm here today just to finish up. I know you guys are really busy, but I understand the bill is tricky. I'm just asking for continuity and security for these people so that they can put their kids in school next semester, and they know that they have money coming in and they can pay their mortgages. I urge you to look at someone like me. I'm not a hedge fund. I'm not a rich guy. I rent my house on Maui, and this is all I have. Please don't take it away. I yield my time. Thank you.
Next, we have Brandon Chu.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee. My name is Brandon Chu. I'm providing testimony in strong support of SB 1074. I've worked in tourism and hospitality industry my entire life. It was my first job after I graduated from Maui High School, supported me while I attended Tim School at UH Manoa. Fortunate to have traveled the world. It only helps solidify my understanding that Maui is just the best place on earth. I'm very concerned about the state of our industry. 2024 visitors were down over 23% versus 2019. That's more than four times what Oahu experienced, tenfold from what Hoi Island experienced, and over 20 percentage points worse than Hoi Island. Our industry attempts to recover group business as a key market. They stay in Kaanapali. They book their activities there. They do snorkel lessons, surf lessons, sunset sails, whale watches. Many groups have already booked these experiences this year, but more importantly, plan one to two years out. SB 1074 has written, not only help keep Kaanapali commercial operators in business, prevent hundreds of losses of jobs, support financially, and also support our industry. I understand this is a difficult decision. I love Maui and Hawaii, and it has a very diverse community with the best outcomes always coming from listening to all sides on an issue, and strongly believe SB 1074 does that. Mahalo for the time.
Thank you. And then David Frankel. Not present. Oh, there you are.
Morning. Back in 2001, Namoku, a group of Hawaiian farmers and fishermen, raised a concern with the Board of Land and Natural Resources that the environmental impact of diverting streams on Maui was not being studied. And they could not dispose of this water, give the water to Alexander Baldwin, without preparing an environmental impact statement. The Board of Land and Natural Resources refused to do so and refused to even consider the impact. Streams were drained dry, and in fact, half dozen of them still today are, completely. The water is, all the water is taken from a stream. That is a, by definition, a significant impact. But the Board of Land and Natural Resources, for decades, refused to require the preparation of EIS. This is the same board that the Supreme Court found acted in bad faith, misrepresenting facts to the Supreme Court. This is a, the agency that needs control. What you are doing with this legislation, both the Senate vehicle and the House vehicle, is to let the Department and the Board act in an unfettered manner, in a way that damages our environment. These bills are poorly drafted, really poorly drafted, not just the Senate vehicle, but the House vehicle as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Leonard Nikoa on Zoom. Not present. Terry Doucet on Zoom.
Yes, thank you. To the Chair and Members Committee, as a resident of Maui that has served for over 40 years in our hospitality industry, I'm in support of Senate Bill 1074 SD. Ever since the disastrous fires in Lahaina, visitor industry continues to suffer the aftermath with hotels, tourism, and related businesses not nearly back to operating conditions experienced prior to August of 2023. As I interpret Senate Bill 1074 SD, I believe it provides for these operators to go forward and continue with their operations and services during the process of an environmental review. Services as permitted would be allowed to continue everything for their operations as is, normal circumstance, if or when permits are challenged for environmental or other concerns. Having this continuation of service is obviously important as it allows the operators to remain in business and continue until decision is made. If narrowing this bill to apply to Kaanapali OMR, ORMA permit operators, as was the intention, assist in moving forward towards approval, that would be acceptable. In summary, I'm asking you to please vote for and pass Senate Bill 1074 SD for the sake of our communities, families, business investments, and small operators that represent the backbone of our economy in Maui. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Bill Coney on Zoom. Not present. Dave Rainey on Zoom. Go ahead.
Yes. Aloha, Kakao. My name is Dave Rainey. I strongly oppose Senate Bill 1074, Senate Draft 2, which would allow a vast range of illegally authorized activities to continue, potentially indefinitely, without a required consideration of their environmental, cultural, and social impacts to our islands and our present and future generations. Our environmental review law allows decision makers in the public to make more fully informed decisions that can balance and mitigate potential long-range impacts to the public interest from certain proposed activities before those activities and their impacts are allowed to proceed. This ensures prudential, prudent planning while reducing conflict, minimizing adverse outcomes, and safeguarding the health and well-being of present and future generations. Unfortunately, the failure of certain departments to comply with this law before authorizing, authorizing certain actions, such as permitting the take of an unlimited number of ecologically critical marine specimens for the aquarium trade or the decades-long dewatering of streams in East Maui, has resulted in severe and in some cases irreparable ecological, cultural, social, and economic harms that could and should have been avoided through the prudent planning embodied in our environmental review law. By allowing illegal authorized activities to continue while, while environmental challenges are resolved, I urge you to hold Senate Bill 1074. Mahalo.
Thank you. And next up, Clayton Kubo on Zoom.
Clayton Kubo. Thanks for coming back.
Um, we can't, we can't hear you very well.
You're going hard. We're not talking loud enough, okay? I'm gonna try louder then. Clayton Kubo, Waimea, Kauai, lifelong resident of Waimea, Kauai. I understand that this is a hard choice, hard vision that you guys gonna have to make. But in the end, is it gonna impact me and my family? That's the question that I like, I like ask you guys. Hunting, fishing, is it gonna impact us now? How about the rent-a-car agents, the rent-a-car companies? What, they're gonna have to do an environmental impact statement also eventually in the future? Just because people wanna sue them? You guys gotta really understand this one. This is like a weapon. They're using this as a weapon. Please consider, and again, I won't say, reiterating myself, please consider passing this bill. Mahalo nui aloha.
Thank you. Then Mike Kelly on Zoom. Not present. Mike Nakachi on Zoom. Go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. I'm grateful here to testify in strong opposition against Senate Bill 1074. HIPAA is there foraina, and I think everyone has to realize is that things need to be there for this place that we love. For me, we, we need HIPAA there because it is one of those things that allow many Kanaka and many Hapa Hawaiians and many local people and many folks that enjoy this place, that have that right to malama this place. If we always forget, and these basic principles of, I think where this has really gone wrong is this is always about money. And I think the, the core crux of this is about dollars. And I think agencies such as DLNR really needs to do their homework. They need to do capacity issues. They need to do a lot more things that then affect public trust, resources, and public trust assets. So again, if there is no alohaaina, and we don't have that right to malamaaina and restoreaina mamona, I'm in strong opposition to this particular bill. It needs to be held, and it needs to be rethought of. For me, even as an operator of boats, if I am doing something wrong, I would love to be in that position of doing something right. This has to be something that is right for all the people of Hawaii, not a commercial carve-out for any specific industry. Thank you, Nicole, and I appreciate the time to testify in strong opposition. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next, we have Isaac Harp on Zoom. Please go ahead.
Aloha, Kakao. Isaac Paka Harp, testifying in strong opposition to SB 1074, purportedly introduced to keep the Kaanapali tour boats in business. The DLNR testified on February 27th that environmental assessments could be completed in six to eight months. Since the court ruling was handed down last December, the DLNR should be a few months away from completing environmental reviews for the Kaanapali boats. The DLNR's mission is to enhance, protect, conserve, and manage Hawaii's unique and limited cultural, natural, and historic resources. Therefore, it's puzzling what the DLNR proposed in the addition of Hawaii Vice Statute Chapters 187A, 188, 189, 190, and 200 that deals with previously permitted commercial fisheries in the main islands and Northwestern Hawaiian Islands. Aquarium fishing, longline fishing, throwcraft parasailing, water saluting, commercial high-speed boating, kanioli bay, commercial ocean use activities, and more. Why is this? Inquiring minds should want to know. If the DLNR requires additional staff to comply with HIPAA, this legislature should ensure that they have sufficient funding for staff specifically to conduct environmental reviews. Guarding HIPAA by adopting SB 1074 would leave a black mark on the legacy of this legislature as an informed assault on Hawaii's environment. Please defer SB 1074 as it is nothing but a party for past DLNR failures to conduct environmental reviews prior to issuing commercial permits, and a blessing from this legislature to continue doing so into the future. Mahalo.
Thank you. And next, we have Bianca Isaki on Zoom. Please go ahead.
Aloha. I oppose this measure, and I just wanna have, I wanna comment that it's not necessary for the Kaanapali boaters. The Kaanapali boaters, they could continue their operations because there is a settlement. The settlement is highly relevant because under that settlement, the, the plaintiffs would not, would not require the EA while these temporary measures are in place. The temporary measures were things that boaters here have already said they would do, things like have buoys and like have safety attendants and like enforce parking. So the message that should be sent is that, like, like Earth Justice said, that DLNR should not be using the boaters as human shields. They should just okay the settlement because the boaters are fine with it. And to the extent that boaters have said, oh, it's only 10% of the boaters that are okay with it. Well, why wouldn't you be okay with things that, things like, like having safety buoys and safety attendants? Like, these are issues that the community in West Maui have been raised, have been raising for over a decade. So I just urge you, please do not pass this. It's a rollback of HIPAA, and they, and the Kaanapali boaters, they have, they have an option, so they don't have to stop. And this would also send a message to DLNR that they can't use those Kaanapali boaters to rollback HIPAA. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then Kay Nishiki on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair and Committee members. Testifying in strong opposition to SB 1074. We wanted to provide the Committee with additional information about the lawsuit. You know, we filed suit against DLNR asking it to consider environmental impacts about commercial activity in Kaanapali because of concerns for public safety, as well as public access and parking. After the court's decision, we immediately reached out to DLNR to propose an interim solution. And we also reached out to the commercial boating community, and they have been extremely receptive. We did send a written settlement offer with the proposed terms to DLNR AG on March 4th. The parties are discussing this tentative agreement that would allow boating activities to continue with the protections in place that address our community concerns, including ocean safety and public access. Instead of engaging with the parties to reach a solution, DLNR has really dragged its feet on this agreement. And here we are, and they're begging the state for a blank check that would enable their ongoing mismanagement while also dismantling these important environmental protections with no recourse. This bill gives DLNR free rein to just continue to rubber stamp a variety of destructive activities far beyond boating with no accountability to the community, the courts, or this body. If DLNR were interested in actually helping our parties reach a consensus, we would be there already.
Can you please summarize?
But DLNR and their attorney, Miranda Steed, have been nothing but an obstacle in, in this process. This, having this bill pending while we're trying to finalize our settlement is driving a further wedge between the parties and community, and it's not conducive.
Can you please summarize? We have a lot of other testifiers still to get to.
This bill is drastic, divisive, and unnecessary, and the urgency is manufactured. Just tell DLNR, get in a room and work this out. That's how we do things.
Next up, we have Nicholas Coons on Zoom. Not present. Then we have Deandra Makakoa. In person, not here. Junya Nishiki. And then Leonard Nikoa.
Yeah.
Please go ahead.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, we've been fighting this thing for how, how long already here in Kaanapali, Lahaina? When we was actually living on the beach in Kaanapali, we seen the unsafe hazards that some of these boat operators do. And, you know, we stayed there for 170-some days. And just watching the, how dangerous it's, not all, some of these operators operate. You know, even get the donkey captain when go inside Honolulu Bay. You know, and all that kind of stuff, just get some guys that just don't know. But some of the commercial guys when, call me up, and we try to work things out. They try to make it best for everybody. They start DLNR, like, like the previous testifier said, bruh, come sit down with us, come sit down with the community, come sit down with the boat operators. And then let's go talk story, and they go do this stuff. Because this is how we supposed to do them, work together. But DLNR, they, they slacking, like they always do. And then, and then they, they claimed that they're no more enough people. Hire some more people then. So us guys, the community, no, no need go do their job and go monitor and police this damn beach because it's safety issue. I see planning guys almost get run over because no matter egress, degress, buoys in this place. And all, and then they all come in like six boats at a time. Crazy, bruh, crazy. Let the community and the commercial operator talk story, be it DLNR, BillNR, whatever letter you gotta use. Tell them, come on and sit down and listen, and get off their corner and do something. Shoots.
Thank you. Okay, we have additional written testimony that was submitted. Okay, we have additional written testimony that was submitted from businesses and organizations, 53 in support, 18 in opposition, and additional testimony from individuals, 175 in support, 102 in opposition. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? All right, seeing none, members, questions? Rep. Baladi?
It's one from DLNR.
Any questions on this side?
Can you shed light on the situation with the settlement possibilities?
So I actually can't. I'm not privy to the settlement discussions. And in fact, I haven't been, I haven't seen that letter. I mean, I would assume that because it's a settlement letter, it's privileged under like Rule 408. I'm not the attorney in this, of course, but yeah, I haven't been.
Tech support?
Well, I mean, maybe.
Oh, brief recess. All right, we are back, and please carry on.
So I understand that your answer is that you can't speak to it. Should this bill move out? I think a communication to the department needs to be that someone needs to show up and be able to explain some of this because it is being entered into the public record that there is a potential fix. And so if there is a potential fix, which we don't understand on this side of the table, then that could cure this entire situation that we're in at the moment. So that's all I'd ask for you to take back to the department.
Yes, and while I can't speak to the details of the settlement offer, I can speak to the details of the status of the case as far as I know it. You know, the reconsideration motion that the state submitted to the court was, I think our argument was continued to facilitate settlement negotiations, and it was continued until this Friday. I'm not sure if the court is going to be entertaining further continuances. I would defer to the attorneys on that. And then also to just go a little bit further. And of course, I'm not the attorney on this matter. But my understanding of a settlement agreement, if one is to come in, you know, to fruition and entered into, that would be binding upon the parties only. And I believe that the defendant parties, particularly the commercial operators, they're limited to, I want to say, six. And the potential impacts are beyond that. Perhaps there is going to be a dialing back of the judgment itself. But again, I'm speculated, speculating.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Any questions for EEP members? Nope. Okay, Rep. Iwamoto, go ahead, followed by Rep. Shimizu.
Thank you, this is for DLNR. Somebody mentioned how long it takes to do an EIS. How long does it take you guys to do an EIS?
I haven't done one myself. I know that my colleague here has, how long did AQ EIS? Over six years was the aquarium fishing EIS. That's how long it took. So yeah, I guess it could take six to eight months if all things lined up perfectly.
Okay, so has it started at all? I mean, you know that this has been, I mean, so HIPAA has been in place since like 1976 or something, so how long? I mean.
So with this particular permitting activity that we're talking about, that's under litigation, I believe that the judgment came down in December. Reconsideration was kind of, is the priority because of the impacts of the judgment. That's being the focus now. Secondarily, it's this particular legislation that is being pushed forward to address that. And then also, at the same time, we are, you know, having to figure out what to do as far as going to OEQC to request an exemption or in the alternative, go through the EIS process.
Because the way this bill is currently written, it only gives you one year, right? So if it takes six years, you're still going to be stuck with people.
That's correct. So we noted that in our testimony that it may take longer than one year to go through the process. You know, there are other, one way is removing the one-year limitation. The other is expanding beyond, I'm not sure.
You guys have started the process, the EIS process.
Not for this particular, I can't, because, I mean, that would have to, yeah, I don't think we have, no.
Thanks, and I think Rep. Shimizu has a question.
Thank you, Chair. DLNR, please. You know, I heard testimony that, and I'm sorry if I missed Rep. Baladi's question and answer, but I heard that there is a settlement that allows current use?
So.
I mean, current business continuation?
That may be the settlement offer. I'm not sure whether that's the offer and what would be allowed if we were to agree, you know, what the plaintiffs are. I'm not sure if plaintiff's counsel is here, but I'll take their word for it.
So without that case settlement and this bill passing, there is no continuation of business? Is that a accurate statement?
If the current order before the circuit court remain, stays, essentially, DLNR is not going to be able to issue any commercial use permits for that impacted area, which is Kanapali waters. And there's going to be a termination, oh, sorry.
Okay, okay, no, we'll just limit it to the Q and A that's on the table here.
I don't want to litigate this with one of the attorneys or.
Yeah, no, no, that's okay.
But my understanding, my understanding is that the licenses are, they all have terms. And as they term out, we won't be able to renew it pursuant to the order.
Okay, I have some questions, I'm going to jump in. Has the department looked at the categorical exemptions that are available and decided if any of these apply in this instance?
Yes, we have. I'm not sure as to which one it would apply to. I frankly, I don't know if.
I mean, you're coming to this hearing to support a bill that would completely exempt, your recommended testimony of DLNR is to completely exempt not only boating, but also fisheries from environmental review. And you haven't even looked at whether any category, you can't answer for sure whether categorical exemption would apply?
Sure. So the, okay, so we, we're requesting a bunch of chapters, and that was in alignment with our recommendation under HB 661. However, we understand that truly the impacts are limited to 200. However, we were trying to anticipate, or as reflected in our testimony, we also are considering the AQ litigation and our fisheries litigation that we have as well.
Okay, but I'm just curious about the exemptions existing already under the process of Chapter 343, the categorical exemptions that DLNR has. Do any of them potentially apply in this case?
I don't know. And if we do figure out whether when does apply, it would actually be submitted to OEQC for their determination as well as public hearing.
Okay, OEQC actually was renamed and doesn't even exist anymore.
Yeah. But, you know, OPSD or whoever the, I'm sorry, I've been, when I was practicing, it was OEQC.
No, it just seems a bit surprising that you, that it doesn't seem like you've really explored the available categorical exemptions, which is how the process would normally unfold. That would be the first go-to, not a bill at the legislature to solve this issue.
You can blame me for the ignorance and only me. That's it. I wouldn't blame the department, sorry, Kimon, but that's it as far as status goes. If you want me to get a more detailed status, I can get that to you by the end of the day.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thanks. I'm going to ask a question, I guess, of, I don't know, maybe David Frankel?
Yeah.
Thank you. Do you, I mean, are you familiar? Because I know you have some familiarity or maybe for OPSD. But what exemptions are available under DLNR's existing list of CADAX that could apply in this case?
So I want to correct, first, I want to correct a misstatement. The former office called Office of environmental quality control does not make the determination.
No, I realize that, but can you just answer the question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there are, I believe, 10 categorical exemptions. These, this continuing activity may fall into one of them. I have not done the analysis. That's, as you just pointed out, that's the first thing an agency should do, and the rules are pretty easy to find.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. Did, I think Rep. Poipoi was waiting to ask a question. Thank you for DLNR.
I just wanted to maybe clarify an earlier question about the EIS versus an EA.
Yes.
Has an EA been initiated because that process is usually faster than a full EIS?
No.
Okay, and how long, because that process comes before an EIS to determine whether or not you need an EIS.
Yes, so we would have to make a determination if there's no significant impact. And then we can stand on the EA. But they would track in the same, so EA would.
That would be the beginning of the EIS, so like the first year or?
EA, EIS process, that's where it would diverge, right? If you make a determination of no significant impact.
Okay. At the last hearing, Chair Chang, I believe, said six to eight months. But it sounds like maybe if that was where a lot of priority and resources were put, that it could potentially be done in six to eight months.
Potentially, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Not, I mean, that's not considering litigation time built in, that type of thing.
But is there a reason they can't happen at the same time? Like, in a good faith effort to be like, look, we're trying, we're starting, we're getting this going, maybe that could help as well. I don't see why they have to be exclusive of each other in the timeline. Thank you.
Okay, if no further, okay, last question, Rep. Shimizu.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for Sarah Cloud, please. You know, I try to keep things simple because I'm still trying to grasp all of this. But my understanding is this bill is trying to allow the businesses to continue as the EIS process is unfolding. I do understand the HIPAA concerns, and I definitely agree that we need to protect our environment. As I read this bill, though, where in the language are the concerns that HIPAA will be overturned? And it's broader than just allowing businesses to continue? If you could help me understand that, I would appreciate that.
Yes, that's a very excellent question. So I'll start with maybe the biggest gaping loophole is subsection B, which allows commercial activities permits to be renewed indefinitely as environmental review process takes place. And so as we've seen, you know, in East Maui, for example, if the DLNR is not motivated to start the processor and encourage the permit to start the process, yes, well, that wouldn't be in this bill. I'm sorry. But as we've seen with East Maui, if the DLNR is not motivated to move quickly, that could stretch out for decades. And throughout that entire time, there's going to be all these potential impacts that are occurring that could potentially have been avoided if they had, you know, gone through that prudent planning and public input process that's baked into the chapter 343.
Okay, but as I read in the paragraph above that, it does, says it shall not include marine environments. So one could interpret that that protects HIPAA and other environmentalist concerns.
Right, so HIPAA covers more than just the ocean, right? So like in the stream example, I'm not sure if that would necessarily be excluded from this, from that language. I think also to, you know, other commercial activities could impact a lot of terrestrial areas, right? Watershed, like indigenous species habitat, native habitat, sorry. And so there is a potential, again, for these commercial activities to be approved and renewed and renewed and renewed that carry significant impacts accumulate over time.
One last question, Chair. So is there language that maybe we could clarify in this to, again, narrow it so that those concerns are protected and addressed adequately for your protection?
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question. I think the most surgical way to resolve this situation is to get the DLNR to apply existing laws or at least explore existing, the categorical exclusions that were mentioned. And that way, we don't have to do all this tweaking and opening up of potential loopholes and unintended consequences.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Okay, can we make it the last? Because we both have two additional agendas to get to. Okay, go ahead.
Quick follow-up. To Representative Shimizu's question, would, because this opens up 343 and creates this loophole actually for one-year activities for going forward, if we were to put in a sunset clause to this so that we would return to HIPAA law, would that be a further narrowing of this bill to keep it moving forward?
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess a sunset by definition would narrow the length of time in which it would be in effect. But yeah, I mean, not knowing what kinds of commercial activities may be approved, what kind of impacts that may occur, like even within a shorter time period, you know, that's something that I think would still be of concern.
No, fair enough. Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, brief recess, and we'll be right back for decision-making. All right, we are back for decision-making. The Joint Committees on Energy and Environmental Protection and Water and Land. Decision-making for EEP. First up, we have Senate Bill 1602 relating to the Keahoe Aquifer System. So for this, we will adopt Department of Health suggested amendments to the language, except we will blank out the appropriations in there and just note those in the committee report. And we will also remove the blank year in line one so that it just reads DLNR shall establish a Keahoe aquifer monitoring program. And some technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. And we will just re-defect the date to July 1st, 3000. With that, members, any discussion? Seeing none, vice chair.
On SB 1602, SD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and vice chair voting aye. Rep. Kahaloa?
Aye.
Rep. Kush?
Aye.
Representative Quinlan is excused, as is Representative Ward. Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Water, land, same recommendation.
Voting on SB 1602, SD1. Recommendation of the Chair is to pass with amendments. Chair and vice chair vote aye. Representative Baladi?
Aye.
Representative Ichiyama? Representative Iwamoto?
Aye.
Representative Morikawa?
Aye.
Representative Poipoi? Representative Woodson is excused. Representative Shimizu? Representative Suzo?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Then moving on to Senate Bill 1318 relating to water pollution. This is a pretty straightforward admin bill, just doing some cleanup. So we're going to move this forward as is. to move this forward as is. Members, any discussion? If not, vice chair, please take the vote.
On SB 1318, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Chair and vice chair voting no, I mean, voting aye. I'm sorry. And noting the excused absence of both Representative Quinlan and Representative Ward, are there any reservations or no votes? Seeing none, Chair recommendation has been adopted.
Water, land, same recommendation, other than the no vote. Vice chair for the vote.
Okay, voting on SB 1318, recommendation is to pass as is. Noting the excuse, member of Representative Woodson for the remainder of the agenda. Anyone voting no, anyone voting with reservations, all members present vote aye. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Okay, on to Senate Bill 1074. So we're going to make some significant amendments here and move this forward to continue discussion, but we want to encourage DLNR to go and look at their available categorical exemptions and come back to us with an update on the settlement so we can determine if doing any amendments to chapter 343 is necessary at all. But we will for now, you know, keep this as a vehicle for discussion. We're going to adopt amendments of the Ocean Tourism Coalition, so that will limit this to activities under chapter 200, the boating activities, not, not the fisheries. Limit it to permit renewals, as is suggested in that testimony. And we will also add a sunset date of, gosh, I hadn't thought this through actually, a sunset date of two years, we can always change that later. So, you know, just to add more assurance to the members as they vote on this, because, you know, we are hesitant about changing HIPAA. And then additional technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and we will re defect the date to July 1st, 3000, and continue this conversation, because we do want to address the concerns of the boating community and make sure that businesses and families and jobs aren't affected unnecessarily, but there may be better ways to do it than via legislation, but we'll still keep working on it as session moves forward. So with that, members, any discussion?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your work on this bill. I think there's still a lot more work that needs to be done, but I do still have some strong reservations, but I'm going to support the bill at this time so we can continue to do the work before session is done to make this a better, more appropriate bill that meets more of our communities' expectations on all sides.
No further discussion. Vice chair, please take the vote.
On SB 1074, SD2, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair voting aye, vice chair voting with reservations. Representative Kahaloa.
Aye.
Representative Kush.
Aye.
Representative Quinlan is excused, as is Representative Ward. Chair recommendation has been adopted.
Great, thank you, water land.
Committee on Water, Land, same recommendations. Any concerns or comments?
Thank you, Chair. I, I agree with Rep. Kahalo's comments, and I will be voting with reservations myself, but I'd like to have further discussions and hope to resolve this matter for a win-win situation.
Okay, thank you.
Same comments with reservations. Thanks, Chair.
I'll be voting no. I'm very disappointed with DLNR's not moving forward with the EA or EIS. This has been, I mean, I feel like we're enabling them to continue that practice, so no.
Voting on SB...
Sorry. Also voting no, but I really do appreciate the amendments. I think it makes it a much better bill to move forward. I'm still just very concerned about HIPAA and just opening it up and how it could impact my district, but I, I'm happy with the amendments to it, so thank you.
Thank you. Vice chair for the vote.
Voting on SB 1074, SD2, recommendation of the chairs to pass with amendments, noting the, sorry, already excused Representative Woodson, and also the notes from Representative Iwamodo, Poi Poi, and then with reservations, or sorry, anyone else voting no. And also noting the reservations for...
Reservations for Souza, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and noting the reservations for Representative Bellotti, Shimizu, and Souza, anyone else voting with reservations for water and land. Okay, then all other members vote aye. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
All right, and we are adjourned.
Reconvening Energy and Environmental Protection Committee on Tuesday, March 18th, for our 920 agenda. We're going to jump right into the first measure, SB 391. First to testify is Department of Health, in support on Zoom.
Hi, good morning. My name is Noah Klein. I'm with the Solid and Hazardous Waste Branch in the Environmental Health Administration, Department of Health. The department will stand on its written testimony in support with some comments, and I'm here to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have the Hawaii State Energy Office, in support in person.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Monique Schaefer on behalf of the Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand in support of this bill with comments, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have Lauren Zerbal, Hawaii Food Industry Association, with comments on Zoom. Not present. That's all we have signed up to testify. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this measure? Seeing none. Is there any question?
Quick questions for Energy Office. I think your testimony was to combine the EV working group with this working group, but have you talked to Department of Health about that?
Yes, we have. And, you know, so I'm taking over Maria Tome's position. She's moved to the CA, and what I've been briefed on is that they are, you know, supportive of doing that. But again, we see them as, you know, very critical to doing a lot of the enforcement on anything.
I mean, this, this working group is geared towards small and medium lithium ion batteries, not EV batteries, so I'd be confused the position, the place of the Energy Office in it at all, to be honest. I mean, we're talking about batteries in every small device, in a birthday card, in a vape pen, up to, you know, all kinds of rechargeable batteries. It's really Department of Health subject matter?
Right, and I think, you know, we provide revisions to even make them the co-chair. So right now it's HNEI, and I would have to take that back to Mark and the Chief Energy Officer. I do think that the Hawaii State Energy Office has data and information on, you know, like the house, house batteries, power walls, and a lot of...
That's not, I don't think, included under the small and medium category?
I mean, I think a holistic approach, it's similar chemistry, battery chemistries that we're dealing with, so, you know, I think, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next measure, SB 1298, SD2. First to testify is the Department of Health with comments on Zoom.
Hi, good morning, Chair and Vice Chair. Lane Otu, representing Department of Health, and we're standing on our written testimony, providing comments on this measure, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have Tess Herman, County of Maui, in opposition on Zoom.
Hi there, thanks for having me. My name is Tess Herman, County of Maui, recycling specialist. Yeah, we stand on our testimony in strong opposition of this bill. Right now, we just, I mean, over the past few years, we just passed a law to help get e-waste off the island, you know, electronic waste puts toxins into landfills, creates fire risk. The electronic manufacturers at present moment are required to take off 70% of the weight they bring in, and we want that measure to stay. The current measure would roll that back. It doesn't help our county at all. In this bill, it says that you only need to put recycling centers in two locations on Maui, Molokai and Kahului, which we already have. It also gives the manufacturers much more control of how they want to conduct their electric waste collection in the state, electronic waste collection, and even though they've had the opportunity to prove themselves in the last few years, I haven't seen any increase in electronic waste collection here in my county. And so that is why we stand in strong opposition in passing this, because it rolls back other stronger regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to testify on this measure, we have Ted Bolan from Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition and Climate Protectors Hawaii in opposition in person.
Thank you, Chair Bolan, Vice Chair Peruso, Ted Bolan for Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition and Climate Protectors Hawaii in strong opposition to this bill. It, as the previous speaker said, it would eliminate the weight restrictions for recycling, and the things that are offered in place of it are of not great value. So we oppose this bill. We have, in our comments, provided a willingness to consider some temporary reduction in amount in the 70%, but, but not a permanent reduction and not an elimination of weight requirements. Available for questions? Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have Roy Kadota, Mr. K's Recycling and Redemption Center, Inc., in opposition on Zoom. Sir, I, we cannot hear you. I, I think you might be muted.
Uh, hello, Chair.
Now we can hear you.
There, we can hear you.
Yeah, okay. Hello, Chair Bolan and Vice Chair Peruso, and members. I'd like you to check out Jennifer Navarro's and Michelle Mitsu-mori's testimonies. We're against this, uh, this bill. We're against Bill SB 1298, SD2, and these two people have the right idea. The manufacturers don't want to pay more than they have to. They met a quota last year. What we're saying is maybe we can have a bill where they can collect more than they get credit for it the next year. Jason from Ho'oponopono is saying that he couldn't stop collecting last year because it was just overwhelming how much people were dropping off things because of the new law. Honolulu's RFP just came out, so another million should be in the state, federal, and county roundups. The curbside power plants are, are burning, and you're, you're burning the electronics, and you're now smelling the plastics, the poisons, and the metals, so that's not good. There is no ban on electronic dumping in the landfills. Nicole Bowden knows this bill very well. It's, it started with 151, she introduced the, the two years ago. This bill actually was in process 13 years ago, and it hadn't passed till now. We kind of slipped by the OEMs last year, so that was a great thing that happened. It seems like Senate Bill 12898 is advertising the other islands, but nothing, but they're, they're going in the other direction. One collection like Tess is saying, one collection a month in Kewa and Kona. Our landfills are 10 to 15 years from getting full, and people are thinking of incinerators, and that is a, also because we've been burning, we'll be burning the electronics. To this day, I cannot fathom this bill going so far without amendments. Maui Director of Transportation, the Maui Mayor, Honolulu's Department of Health, Philos County Department of Environmental Management, and 12 individuals are in opposition to this bill. The only two people that are, are in favor of it is the CTA, which is supported by the OEMs, and the Chamber of Commerce, which is a business oriented party. Also, Honolulu has played each side.
Can you summarize for us, please?
Where you can collect. They collect the schools every month. Kukou Hawaii at Jack Johnson has a private nonprofit that they use.
Mr. Kadota. Mr. Kadota, would you mind summarizing for us, please?
Yes, okay. There are sites in Honolulu that does high five, that also does e-waste collection. So the, the point that they're saying is not doable is not correct. There's a lot of weight out there that can be collected. The community will benefit more without this bill being passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Ryan Toyomura, or Miho Koito, from Consumer Technology Association, in support in person.
Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair. Miho Koito on behalf of the Consumer Technology Association. We just wanted to note our support for this bill, which seeks to amend the e-waste law, which was updated in 2022, and adopted collection by weight targets that are problematic for the industry. The data has borne this out across the country. Devices are becoming lighter. That's just the reality of, of the devices that are being produced now, and yet these weight targets are escalating over the years and, and are at 70% as of January 1st of this year. So we do prefer the approach outlined in this bill that gives relief from those weight targets in exchange for expanding the footprint, and we're certainly open to any suggestions for how that footprint gets expanded. However, given all the concerns raised, we did meet with the Department of Health and others, and we have discussed an alternative approach, which is outlined in the Department of Health's testimony. So the new approach, just, you know, to give you a summary of it, would be to delay the implementation of the escalating targets and making them smaller increments, so get, giving the manufacturers until, like, the next four years to get to the 70%, while at the same time allowing the Department of Health to collect data on collections, to analyze whether or not achieving that 70% is even possible. And again, you know, based on CTA's experience, we do not think that the 70% is achievable, but we get that there is a dispute over that, and some folks think it is. So that is the spirit of the compromise that, that the Department of Health has outlined in their testimony. We do have concerns, though, regarding one requirement that is in the reporting side on page 12 of Department of Health's testimony. They would like to see data on collections that includes the average age of every device that is collected. The manufacturers really feel that that's going to increase costs substantially. That would probably be done at the recycler level, but if you take an average of 500,000 pounds per month, that would mean that the recyclers would have to catalog 50,000 to 60,000 pieces of electronics and guess their average age, which we don't think is a really achievable and will also add cost to the whole system. So just wanted to note that we're happy to continue discussing this, and we do appreciate the Department of Health and the opportunity to work with them on alternative. Thanks for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. In addition, we also had testimony from the County of Hawaii Department of Environmental Management in opposition, testimony from Ted, oh, we already talked about Ted, from HICA in opposition, from Kuaia Climate Action Coalition in opposition, from IT Reuse Hawaii in opposition, from the Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii in support, and the Retail Merchants of Hawaii in support. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify on this measure? Additionally, we had 14 individuals submit testimony in opposition. Any questions?
A quick question. Do you have questions? Nope. Quick question for CTA. So I noticed that you requested the contents of your original version of the bill be inserted in an unrelated bill, House Bill 750, in the Senate side, so do you prefer that as the vehicle?
No, I don't think we have any, any, either, either, any vehicle is fine. Um, no, I don't think we have any, any um either either, any vehicle is fine. Um, but but since we're working, uh, this this bill is before this committee, and we did work towards trying to get language to this committee.
But I mean, since you got that stuck in in the in the Senate, I mean, I don't know what the intention there was, but maybe we don't, maybe you want us to defer this because...
No, I mean, I think, I think we're happy to have a vehicle. I think at that point in time, we just weren't sure that there was going to be a vehicle. We didn't know if this was going to be heard. So um, so we just wanted to keep the discussion going. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next measure, Senate Bill three two nine. The only person uh registered to testify is Ellie Jones from DLNR with comments in person.
David Sakota for DLNR will stand on our written testimony offering comments.
Thank you. We also had testimony with comments from Department of Health, um uh testimony from the County of Hawaii Department of Environmental Management in opposition, oh, and Ted Bolin offering comments.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Ted Bolin on behalf of Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. I'm a big supporter of reclaiming water using where possible, um but have some concerns about doing it in this instance and have some strong feelings that the laws that exist and as proposed in some of the bills um doesn't go far enough. Before we reuse water, we need to make sure that it makes some sense, that there's a demand for it, and it makes sense economically. There was testimony from the city and from the County of Kauai, how expensive that would be. And I have um increasing concerns about PFAS with uh reusing uh wastewater treatment plant water. Um, we need to be testing and making sure that before we spread that water around the state for irrigation, that it's safe and that it's not making uh people sick because PFAS seems to be making people have some very serious illnesses at very low levels. So I think this is premature, and I think that we should uh be careful about uh moving forward with that. Um, so I would, I propose some amendments. Um, in my testimony, you have those. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Well, I should first ask if there's anyone else who wishes to testify on this measure. Uh, seeing none, members, are there any questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to SB fifteen eighty-eight SD one. First to testify is Hawaii State Energy Office with comments in person.
Chair, Vice Chair, Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand on our written testimony with comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Next to testify is Christopher Dean, Clean the Pacific, Recycle Hawaii in opposition on Zoom. Not present. Next to testify is Mike Ewall, Energy Justice Network in opposition on Zoom.
Thank you Chair and Vice Chair and um members of the committee, if there are any in the audience, which I don't see. Um, Mike Ewall with Energy Justice Network. Nuclear power in Hawaii is such a horrendous idea. It's actually hard to understand why this bill is even being heard in an environmental committee. The state energy office doesn't even support this, which is something I I can't say on basically any other energy technology I've seen them testify on. Nuclear power does not make sense in Hawaii. It would create dangerous radioactive cross-ocean shipments of radioactive fuels and wastes. It stands in the way of meeting the renewable portfolio standard for one hundred percent renewable energy by twenty forty-five, and it would take at least a decade to build one. And the last one built in the U.S. was seven years longer than promised to build in time it took and seventeen billion dollars over budget. Nuclear power is the most expensive and subsidized form of power that we have, and the size makes no sense for Hawaii. A typical reactor is about one thousand megawatts, way too big for any island other than Oahu. And if it were meeting Oahu's needs, it would be about half of the needs. So when it shuts down for refueling, everyone just loses power. It makes no sense. And the small versions are not ready. They're basically still experimental fantasies. There are no designs for these small modular reactors that have been approved since the now abandoned design was partially approved five years ago. So I just asked you to please kill this bill today. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony. Next to testify, we have Sherry Pollak, three fifty Hawaii, um in opposition on Zoom.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, aloha Chair and Vice Chair. My name is Sherry Pollak, and I'm speaking on behalf of three fifty Hawaii. We are in strong opposition to this measure. We stand on our written testimony, but I wish to highlight just a couple of points. Nuclear power is not only a distraction from Hawaii achieving our clean energy goals, it could pose serious harms to our health and environment. The bill is rife with factually inaccurate information, including the statement that nuclear energy is quote "carbon-free electricity." However, this is a false narrative perpetuated by the nuclear industry. There is no such thing as a zero or close to zero nuclear energy reactor. Even existing reactors emit due to continuous mining and refining of uranium needed for the reactor. Other serious concerns we have regarding this measure include transporting nuclear fuel, which creates a very serious environmental hazard. Additionally, there's no viable long-term solutions for safely containing radioactive materials here or anywhere. According to scientists, the lethal radiation must be maintained and funded for at least two hundred thousand years. In other words, forever. Bottom line, if we're already having such an immense challenge just trying to be able to cite a landfill on Oahu, how are we ever going to cite a nuclear waste facility that would contain lethal radioactive waste? We realize that this measure is just to establish a task force, but why throw away money on something that the energy office has already indicated would be an expensive form of energy, let alone the environmental risks? Taxpayers don't need this type of wastefulness. Nuclear power is too dirty, too dangerous, too expensive, and too slow to address the climate crisis. We urge the committee to hold this measure. Nuclear energy has no place in Hawaii's clean energy future. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Dave Molyneux, Greenpeace Hawaii in opposition on Zoom.
Aloha. Thank you Representative uh Lowen and Brusso for your ongoing efforts to protect our environment. We 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 do appreciate you so very much. Um, Dave Molyneux, representing Greenpeace Hawaii, uh, our thousands of members uh statewide, we stand in strong opposition to SB fifteen eighty-eight. We don't need a task force to tell us what we already know. Just a couple of points. We already know the people of Hawaii have rejected nuclear power. It's in our constitution. We already know that nuclear power disasters are costly and can never be cleaned up. Chernobyl, Three Mile Island, Fukushima, those folks' sites will never ever be cleaned up. And just like he was saying, the the new reactors, they're not ready to go. There's no place to store the contamination in Hawaii. And the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, finally, uh, says you need an emergency planning zone around a nuclear power plant typically extends a ten-mile radius for immediate radiation exposure. There's no place in the state of Hawaii where we have ten miles free of people where we'd have a a possibility of permanent contamination of a site. Uh, finally, it's not unlike the storing-gas travels where they're trying to extract sunbeam from cucumbers to produce power. Uh, you didn't need a task force to tell you that was not a viable option. We don't need to tell us uh that nuclear power in Hawaii is also not a viable option. Thank you so much for your ongoing efforts to protect our environment. Uh, aloha.
Thank you for your testimony. Next to testify, we have Linda Williams um in opposition on Zoom.
Aloha. Uh, my name's Linda Williams. I'm in Hilo. I'm a physicist, and I'm opposed to this ridiculous bill. Um, Einstein said, where there he is, that uh nuclear power is a ridiculous way to boil water to generate electricity, and it's something, like you've heard the testimony, we've written you detailed testimony as to why this bill should have never even come to this committee today. And let me tell you, like, when you read the bill, it's full of lies, like Sherry said. And um, what is the task force going to do? Small nuclear reactors don't exist. They're at least a decade away, if not decades away. What's the task force going to do? Sit around and say, uh, let's wait till the small modular reactors come around because they don't exist. So, or are they going to try to raise money in order to like get some federal funds? Well, the federal government is shutting everything down, so there's no point for this task force. And I just can't say how astounded I am that it's even coming to committee when environmental activists like those of us who are here today to testify are exhausted and depleted by what's happening with the federal government. So I'm asking you, please kill this bill. It's unnecessary. It's stupid. And even the task force, by the way, doesn't appoint any environmental activists. So it's just skewed. It's a lobbyist bill. They refer to states that are pursuing, you know, new nuclear, and um they're not island states. So it's just Hawaii is not a place for nuclear power. Please kill this bill. And if you need some education, I am happy to come and give it to you. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, we ha- also have um additional testimony from uh, let's see, sorry. Uh, a number of organizations in opposition, including Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party, Green Party of Hawaii, Kauai Women's Caucus, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition, Maluaina Center for Nonviolent Education, Veterans for Peace, Life of the Land, Kahana O'Napua, Nuclear Energy Institute in Support, um, and then also Kupuna Council and Sierra Cl- Kupuna Council of Traditional Hawaiian Healers in Opposition, and Sierra Club of Hawaii in Opposition, along with um fifty-three individuals in opposition and one individual in support. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify on this measure? Seeing none, are there any questions? Oh, sorry, I did not see you. Did you register to? Go ahead, please go ahead.
I was, and it showed that it was accepted. Anyway, I I'm Robert Richmond. Uh, actually, we met the other day at Ocean Day. Um, I'm a research professor and director of the Kiwala Marine Laboratory at the University of Waikiki, and importantly to this bill, I was one of the lead scientists for the Pacific Island Forum on their expert science panel for the release of the radioactively contaminated water from the Fukushima Daiichi Nuclear Power Plant. And I would like to strongly echo what was just presented. Um, I stand on my written testimony that was submitted and would be happy to provide any briefings for legislators to actually tell you what I've seen at Fukushima for a damaged nuclear power plant, what it does. But in essence, I'm very concerned with any consideration of a nuclear power plant for Hawaii, for the health of our people, our ocean, our economy, and most importantly, for future generations. There are far better, safer, and economically feasible approaches to meeting Hawaii's energy needs now and into the future, and I remain easily accessible to be able to provide a briefing on what we found from the failure of previous nuclear power plants at Fukushima, San Onofre in California, and Pilgrim in Massachusetts. Thanks for your time.
I'm sorry, Mr. Richmond. Um, I have you listed as an individual, but you stated that you had an organizational affiliation.
Yeah, I'm submitting it because I work at the university. I'm a research professor and director of the Kiwala Marine Laboratory. Only the uh president of the university can speak on behalf of the university.
Thank you. Mahalo. Anyone else wishing to submit testimony? Seeing none, any questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next measure, which is um House Bill eleven twenty. First to testify is the Department of Transportation in support on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair. Everyone in the room. Laura Kopp, who for Hawaii Department of Transportation. We appreciate the amendments that were made to this bill and do support the bill and stand on our testimony. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have Christina Corneo from Neste, from Neste in support in person.
Good morning, Christina Corneo with Neste. Um, we stand on our written testimony as submitted in strong support of this, and we do appreciate the amendments that were added to the bill uh in the last committee, and we also appreciate all the work that Chairwoman Lowen did um to get us to this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have uh Leat Carle, Green Fuel Hawaii Coalition in support in person.
Hi, Chairwoman, Vice Chair. Thank you for your time today. My name is Leat Carle, um, here on behalf of Pump Cleaner Fuels Hawaii and Earth Finance to urge strong support for Senate Bill eleven twenty. Um, I do stand on written testimony and just want to uh credit the clean fuel standard in um other states for the reduction in nearly two hundred million metric tons of CO2. Um, this has saved thousands of lives from diseases related to petroleum emissions, um, and has led to incredible investment into public transit and late-duties of programs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have Mike Ewall, Energy Justice Network in opposition on Zoom.
And thank you again, Chair and Vice Chair. Um, this bill would have the Department of Transportation violate the legal settlement in the Navajina F versus Hawaii Department of Transportation case. This settlement requires that the state establish a greenhouse gas reduction plan that reaches zero greenhouse gas emissions by twenty forty-five, which is not possible if using biofuels or waste-based fuels as part of the mix, as they are not carbon-free. Calling it clean fuel or sustainable aviation fuel does not make it clean. There's not enough land and water in the state to grow a significant amount of biofuels in-state, and this was the um on the record with on the Senate side by the Department of Agriculture um from the state testifying before a Senate committee um just in the past month. The biotech industry also keeps testifying in favor of these bills but not disclosing their interests by its clear that they are looking at genetically modified feedstocks, if not enzymes, to what essentially will risk the biosecurity um if grown in the state or processed in-state. It's clear that almost all of this is going to come from imports from the Americas, as was made clear on the Senate side and a lot of the testimony and some of the testimony, um, I believe, on this bill in your packets as well. And anything coming from in-state would most likely be based on toxic waste-to-fuel schemes, such as one being planned for Campbell Industrial Park to gasify construction and demolition waste. And in previous testimonies, the Hawaii Natural Energy Institute documented that that has two hundred times more arsenic in it than clean wood. That doesn't disappear in the process. That goes somewhere, and it goes somewhere that is not good. So there's no such thing as clean, burnable fuels. This bill should be killed, and alternative resolutions like SCR one oh six, which I believe is now um coming up on Friday, should be supported to study how to economically solve our energy needs using non-burn alternatives. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony. We also have Miho Koito, um, Amazon in support on in person. Thank you. We also have testimony in support from Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization, Alaska Airlines and Hawaiian Airlines, Clean Energy Island Energy Services, Low Carbon Fuels Coalition, Clean Fuels Alliance America, Par Hawaii submitted testimony with comments, Blue Planet Foundation submitted testimony in support, as did the Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party, Coalition Earth, um, the Green Party of Hawaii submitted testimony in opposition, and we have um two individuals submitting testimony in support and two in opposition. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify on this measure? Seeing none, are there any questions? No questions. We are going to move on to our final measure, which is Senate Bill twelve thirty-two, House Draft One. Um, first to testify, we have uh Department of Health, sorry, in support, but they're not testifying in person or on Zoom. Um, DHHL testifying in support in person. Thank you. Next to testify, we have Taoyang and Zihui Juju from UH in support on Zoom.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Uh, I'm Taoyang from UH Water Resource Research Center. Uh, we stand on our written testimony in strong support of this measure and will be available for questions.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have Ted Bolin, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support in person.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. Ted Bolin for Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in strong support. This bill presents an opportunity to provide cheaper wastewater solutions. We know how expensive it will be to upgrade cesspools. Uh, we know that there's an opportunity here to save some costs, and this bill would enable the university to study the problems, to look at new technologies, and give information to the Department of Health that enables them to certify. Health that enables them to certify new technologies so that we can go into service in Hawaii. That would really help homeowners who are having to upgrade and counties who are having expensive wastewater costs. I strongly urge passage of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have testimony in support from Leilei Rami, Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission, Melody Aduhua, Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party, the Nature Conservancy, Hawaii Realtors, and that's it for the testimony we have registered. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Seeing none, we are going to adjourn briefly for decision-making, or recess for decision-making.
All right, we are back for decision-making. Committee on Energy and Environmental Protection, the 9:20 AM agenda. First up, we have SB 391 relating to recycling. So based on conversations with Department of Health that I had yesterday, and I've also talked to the bill's introducer in the Senate, we're going to defer this because I think the focus, the more urgent issue right now is talking, is working on coming up with plans for EV battery recycling, and I think Department of Health is concerned they won't have capacity to do both at the same time. So we will focus efforts on moving that bill forward as a measure that just focuses on EV battery recycling, and then hopefully come back next year with a more refined version of a bill for the lithium, smaller and medium-sized lithium-ion battery recycling, which is a very different kind of issue from the batteries that are in homes or vehicles. So defer. So moving on, Senate Bill 1298 relating to recycling. Tempted to defer this because now it's got stuck in a House bill, which I don't think was a really great strategy. But we will move this forward. We're going to adopt almost all of Department of Health suggested amendments, which is mainly reverting it to existing law. We're adding in the peripherals. And then for the goals in Section 5, for these, we're going to vary a little from Department of Health suggested amendments. So we're going to change it to 63% for 2025, 66% for 2026, and 70% for 2027. So it's one less year, but gives a little additional time, two additional years. And then we will remove the preamble because we don't agree with everything that it says in there, and defect the date to July 1, 3,000, and move this forward. Members, any discussion?
Vice Chair, please say hello. Voting on Senate Bill 1298, SD 2. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Representative Kahalua.
Aye.
Representative Kush.
Aye.
Noting the excused absence of Representative Quinlan and Representative Ward, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, Senate Bill 329 relating to water pollution. So for this in Section 1, we will blank out the 50%. So it'll be an undetermined percentage as we continue discussing what might be appropriate. We'll remove Section 2 of the bill because we already passed out Senate Bill 946 that has the committee's preferred amendments to this section. And then we'll add another section that adopts some of the suggested amendments of the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition testimony, just to require the counties to report back to the department on the feasibility of recycled water, ensuring that it's safe to use for agriculture, and hopefully that will help inform whether we should increase these percentages going forward. So we'll continue discussion on this. It's still a work in progress, and defect the date to July 1, 3,000. With that, members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
On Senate Bill 329, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye, noting the excused absences of Representative Quinlan and Representative Ward. Are there reservations or no votes? Seeing none. Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
All right, Senate Bill 1588, everyone's favorite bill today. So we are going to move this forward. I do agree with the testimony largely that my understanding of nuclear is that it's not very feasible for Hawaii. Even microreactors are quite expensive and have been deployed commercially nowhere in the nation. But some people's questions on this will not be settled any other way. So we will move this forward. We're going to make a few amendments. Instead of a member of House and Senate appointed by Speaker and Senate President, we will make that the chair of each relevant subject matter committee. We will add a member from an environmental organization to the working group members. Some other technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and we will re-defect the date on this to July 1, 3,000, and move it forward. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
Voting on SB 1258, SD 1. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair voting aye, Vice Chair voting no, and noting the excused absences of Representative Quinlan and Representative Ward. Are there any reservations or are there no votes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
All right, thank you. Senate Bill 1120, SD 1 relating to transportation. We will move this forward, as is. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
On Senate Bill 1120, SD 1, HD 1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye, noting the absences of Rep. Quinlan and Rep. Ward. Are there any nos or reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. And then on Senate Bill 1232 relating to wastewater systems, we also move this forward as is. We will note in the committee report a recommended appropriation amount of $750,000, similar to what we passed out of the House. With that, members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
On Senate Bill 1232, SD 2, HD 1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Representative Ward and Representative Quinlan have excused absences. Are there any reservations or no votes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. And then on Senate Bill 1501 relating to energy, my apologies, I'm going to defer decision-making on this till Thursday, 3:20 at 11:30 AM. We just had a lot of other stuff to get through, so I will have my decision on that ready then. So with that, this hearing
Good morning. We're convening, reconvening the House on Energy and Environmental Protection for an agenda on resolutions. The first resolution we're going to hear this morning is HCR 54, HCR 54, HCR 58, requesting the Hawaii State Energy Office to convene a geothermal energy working group to evaluate the regulatory and policy landscape surrounding geothermal energy in Hawaii. And first to testify, we have Michelangelo, DCCA, in person.
Morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Michelangelo, and Executive Director, Division of Consumer Advocacy, Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. Stand on our testimony providing support. Thank you.
Comments?
Comments. Thank you.
Thank you. What sort is great. Next, we have DHHL submitting testimony in support in person.
Aloha, Kaka Yehka, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Oriana Lea of the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. The department stands on its written testimony in support of this resolution. We appreciate the inclusion of the Chair of the Hawaiian Homes Commission, or the Chair's designee, in the working group, and we understand the necessity of collaborative work to see this through. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have the PUC in support in person.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chairs. Jessica Simon with the Public Utilities Commission. I stand on the commission's written testimony, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Next, we have Micah Munakate, Ulupono Initiative in support in person.
Hello, Vice Chair, Chair members. Micah Munakate here on behalf of Ulupono Initiative in strong support of this resolution. Thank you very much for moving this forward. We do think that establishing a working group that really just gets everyone on the same page with this opportunity that's before us is really sound policy, understanding that it's a working group that will require potentially some funding, you know, open to exploring some of those funding mechanisms, if it's through the budget or down the line. We think that that could be very beneficial to actually bring folks together and elevate the conversation in a very serious way. So thank you very much for moving this forward. Thank you very much, Chair, for your support on this.
Thank you. That's all the folks we have signed up to testify. Would you like to testify, Mr. Curtis?
I believe I signed up.
Yes, but you didn't sign up to testify in person. You just submitted written testimony. But it's fine, please.
My apology.
It's okay.
Henry Curtis, Executive Director of Life of the Land. We too support a working group to work on geothermal. We believe that some form of firm energy, firm renewable energy is needed. This does not imply that we will endorse all commercial projects that come out of it, but we need to move forward. Thank you.
Sorry, I have one more testifier. Mike Ewall, Energy Justice Network in opposition on Zoom.
Thank you, sir. I had to switch out of Zoom for a moment. So I'm going to ask you to please oppose this resolution. Geothermal, as I put in my testimony and documented with federal economic data, is one of the most expensive forms of power that we have, right up there with burning of trash and trees and with nuclear power. Puno residents have been speaking up for many years about concerns with air releases of hydrogen sulfide and other chemicals that are brought up in the process, including toxic metals and radon, their health impacts when the community is exposed to these gases, as well as drilling impacts with noise, well blowouts, underground fracturing, and not plugging up wells, reinjection of toxic chemicals into the ground, which PGV claims are closed-loop, but it's actually not closed-loop. They're not connected pipes under the ground. They're just reinjecting chemicals. And there are just many other concerns, including ones like the need to evacuate 60,000 gallons of pentane when there's a problem facing the site. So solar energy with storage and be and is firm energy. We can meet our energy needs much more safely and at least four times cheaper based on the latest federal data by doing that instead of geothermal. So let's not do this. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify on this measure? We also have testimony from Coalition Earth in support, the Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party in opposition, and testimony from seven individuals in support and two in opposition. Members, are there any questions?
Yes. Chair Loewen. I guess Energy Office. Do you know, and this might be a question for DBED also, but for the Energy Security Special Fund, what the balance is currently?
I don't know off the top of my head. I'm happy to get back to on that. And I do apologize. I was scrambling. I was like, I thought we submitted testimony providing comments. So I apologize. I didn't make it.
You did. You did. I'm sorry. For some reason, I took.
Okay.
I was like, oh, my God.
No.
Always a scramble.
My apologies.
Yeah, so on our comments, we did ask, because of the work we are doing for resource exploration hand-in-hand with DBED and UH, we do think the timeline lines up better to push this to 2027, the report. So that was the one amendment, but otherwise, we are totally supportive.
The question, the Energy Security Special Fund.
I can get back on that.
Okay, and do you think that the authorized uses of it would allow us to do an appropriation out of it for funding this working group, if this working group needed some funding? And if the working group needs some funding, what amount would you recommend?
That I would also have to, you know, check back with you on that in the DBED as well.
Can you get an email to us and follow up on that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Moving on to the next measure, HR 63, HCR 70, which is requesting the Department of Transportation to facilitate and accelerate the adoption of sustainable aviation fuels to decarbonize Hawaii's transportation sector and support the state's climate goals. First to testify on this measure, we have PAR Hawaii in support in person.
Good morning, Vice Chair, Chair members of the committee. Myungo here on behalf of PAR Hawaii. We stand on our written testimony in support. We understand that the Hawaii Renewable Fuels Coalition offered amendments to the resolution, which we also support. I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Chris Bennett, Pono Pacific, in support in person.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Chris Bennett, on behalf of Pono Pacific, we stand on our written testimony in support.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have Mike Ewall, Energy Justice Network in opposition on Zoom.
Thank you again. I'm going to contradict myself a little bit and say that there is sustainable aviation fuel. It's called clean electricity for inter-island flights, like sea griders, which Hawaiian Electric has been exploring for a little while now. However, long-distance aviation does not have clean fuels available. There are no such things. They all emit carbon. They all involve trying to liquefy trees or crops or wastes and create a lot of pollution in the production systems, as well as the burning of them ultimately. It's the one energy sector that does not have a clean, non-burn option available yet, and there's no point building up a new industry that will largely be about importing biofuels, a lot of them genetically-modified biofuels from the Americas, or experimenting with liquefying trash and trees in-state, when we could be taking this public investment and putting it into the many sectors that still are relying on burning oil for electricity, for ground transportation. Let's clean them up first and stop focusing on the one sector that doesn't have a good option yet. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Nahalani Parsons, Hawaii Renewable Fuels Coalition in support in person.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Nahalani Parsons, Executive Director for the Hawaii Renewable Fuels Coalition, testifying in support of this measure. We appreciate sustainable aviation fuel offers an immediate and viable solution to significantly reduce aviation emissions. And we're thankful to the committee for hearing this resolution today to encourage the conversation with the Department of Transportation. Our testimony includes some minor amendments that we worked with Department of Transportation on, and we put them forward for consideration, such as adding the word "net" before zero, moving one of the paragraphs for clarity, and adding other entities that are encouraged to collaborate with DOT on this in the interim. So we're available if you have questions, and thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Additionally, we have testimony in support from Alaska Airlines and Hawaiian Airlines, Coalition Earth, Island Energy Services. Mr. Curtis, Life of the Land.
Did I not correct any of them?
Yes.
My bad. So much going on.
Yes.
We just got into the fire docket, the PUC, so a lot going on. Sorry. Henry Curtis, Executive Director of Life of the Land. We have been in 10 biofuel proceedings before the Public Utilities Commission. We're certainly recognized that there are enormous risks of biofuels. However, there is no alternative to biofuels right now for aviation, and therefore we support this. Mahalo.
Thank you. We also had testimony in opposition from the Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party, and testimony from four individuals in support and one in opposition. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next measure, HCR 102, HRC 102, HCR 106, which is requesting the Hawaii State Energy Office to conduct a study evaluating the feasibility of establishing a green bonds program in the state. First to testify, only person signed up to testify is the Hawaii State Energy Office with comments in person.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Monique Schaefer again. Stand on our written comments, and I'm available for questions. Thanks.
Thank you. We also had testimony in support from Coalition Earth and two individuals providing testimony in support. Members, any questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to HRC 181, which is requesting the governor, state agencies, and other relevant stakeholders to accelerate agencies, and other relevant stakeholders to accelerate Hawaii's clean energy transition and take immediate decisive action to reduce and eliminate dependence on imported fossil fuels to improve energy security and protect consumers from rising, rising energy costs. First to testify, we have the Hawaii State Energy Office in support in person. Thank you. Next, we have PUC with comments in person.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Max Markrich, I'm an economist at the PUC. We stand on our written comments and available for any questions.
Thank you. We also have testimony from DBED with comments, from Climate Protectors of Hawaii in support, from Coalition Earth in support, and then from six additional individuals in support. Is there anyone else who wishes to submit testimony on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, then we're going to move on to our last measure, HR 202, HCR 210, urging the state to reject energy sources found to be harmful, harmful or destabilizing to our climate system and environment, and to commit to renewable energy and the values of Hawaii's residents. First to testify, we have Hawaii State Energy Office with comments in person. Next, we have Christopher Dean, Clean the Pacific, Recycle Hawaii in support on Zoom. Not present. We also have Mike Ewall, Energy Justice Network in support on Zoom.
Hey, thank you, committee members. Definitely supporting this resolution. Natural gas is the least polluting of the three major fossil fuels, but is the worst for the climate because of the methane that is endemically escaping throughout the entire system, making it far worse even than burning coal for the climate. LNG would be a step backwards for a state that's oil-dependent. Oil is actually the least bad of the three fossil fuels in terms of climate and would contradict the state's renewable portfolio standard goal and the Navahina versus DOT settlement to allow this to proceed, to allow liquefy natural gas, that is, to proceed. So, I encourage you to support this resolution and stand up to fossil fuels.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have Dave Mullenix, Greenpeace Hawaii in support on Zoom.
Aloha, Dave Mullenix from Greenpeace Hawaii, representing our thousands of members and supporters statewide. We stand in strong support. Just quickly, a lot of our testimony is based on Robert Haworth's research. Robert Haworth is one of the most respected scientists who, who does peer-reviewed studies on methane. In fact, he's so well-respected, the Biden administration used his research to decide to pause approval of nuclear, of LNG export licenses, specifically because of his research. Also, the U.S. House Committee on Oversight and Accountability, they did a report on denial, disinformation, doublespeak, big old evolving efforts to avoid accountability for climate change. They used his research once again, and also confirmed with his research that is accurate that LNG is more polluting than coal. Finally, there is some folks who are criticizing Haworth's work. There is a study done on philanthropic organizations that are being funded by the fossil fuel industry, and there are 137 of these organizations that are being funded. One of the biggest ones is called the Bipartisan Policy Center. One of their biggest funders is the Hewlett-Packard Foundation, who also fund, interestingly enough, the Breakthrough Institute that did the paper that was critical of Haworth's work. Thank you so much. Please support this. LNG for Hawaii is just as bad or maybe worse than nuclear. Have a very good day. Aloha.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Sheri Pollock, 350 Hawaii in support on Zoom.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay, my, my name is Sheri Pollock, and I'm speaking on behalf of 350 Hawaii. Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. We stand in strong support of this resolution, urging the state to reject energy sources found to be harmful or destabilizing to our climate and environment. In our written testimony, we address several concerns specifically with one such energy source, LNG, including the serious harms to the climate and the health of communities and environment where LNG is extracted, whales killed due to LNG terminal activity, price volatility, stranded assets, just to name a few. We stand on our written testimony, but wish to highlight a couple of points. Hawaii's clean energy progress is at a critical crossroads. Reverting to dangerous LNG as part of the state's energy mix won't help with resilience or affordability and would be a massive step backwards in our efforts to address the climate crisis. We are contemplating embarking on a major new fossil fuel project when the world's scientists and the international energy agencies say that this is incompatible with a livable climate. Our continued reliance on fuel oil must be addressed, but not by swapping it with another fossil fuel that is even worse for the climate. We are very concerned that the Energy Office relied on the GRIET model in their fuel study and as a result would have under-reported methane emissions. The GRIET model uses EPA inventory estimates, which are based on unverified self-reporting from the oil and gas industry and have been proven to be too low compared with the data derived from independent sources published in peer-reviewed literature. I urge the committee to view the six-minute video linked in our testimony. It uses optical gas imaging to allow you to see what the fossil fuel industry has been hiding from us for all these years and the massive amounts of emissions that are not being reported. Because the gas is invisible, it has been the industry to literally gaslight us for decades with deception campaigns that block the transition to truly clean energy, including the lies that LNG is a cleaner alternative to oil.
Can you, Ms. Pollock, would you mind, would you mind summarizing?
Okay, thank you for allowing me to be on my soapbox. We owe it to today's youth and future generations not to be fossil fooled. Please pass HCR 210 to keep us on the path to a clean energy future. If you watch that video, you'll understand why LNG has the largest greenhouse gas footprint. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have Henry Curtis, Life of the Land, in support in person.
Thank you. Aloha, Chair and Vice Chair and members of the committee. Henry Curtis, Executive Director of Life of the Land. I want to point out that in the testimony that's on the web, there are three supporters of this, but two of the supporters were individuals who said, "I oppose LNG," and therefore, they mislabeled the top. So, actually, there's only one supporter in the testimony. And the supporter, of course, the State Energy Office, remarked that LNG is cheaper than the alternatives and it has less greenhouse gas emissions. Well, in 2009, HECO signed a fuel contract with REG in the continent to import recycled grease and recycled animal fat turned into biofuel. So, there are alternatives to LNG that are firm power that have lower greenhouse gas emissions. So, please support this bill. We need to kill any chance of additional LNG coming into this state. The PUC approved Hawaii Gas being able to import some. It's interestingly enough because they file monthly reports with the PUC, which classifies the amount that they're currently importing, but in other documents, they've indicated they don't import any right now, but they're allowed to.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. The last person signed up to testify is Ms. Wayne Tanaka from Sierra Club in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Wayne Tanaka, Sierra Club of Hawaii. We are in strong support of this resolution. We, you know, we really think this resolution is important to give us time to, you know, ask really important questions about, you know, the government, the administration's like methane plan. A lot of it doesn't, just doesn't seem to make sense, right? You know, it turns a blind eye to the amount of time it would take to do the due diligence and even just the permitting if we really want to hit, you know, a clean renewables portfolio standard by 2045. Its $2 billion estimate for initial infrastructure investments are likely to be much lower than reality, especially as we see cost increases in a lot of the Gulf states as they build LNG infrastructure. It's, seems politically dubious to expect us to walk away from that kind of investment towards a non-fossil fuel alternative, and to the extent that it's looking at things like green hydrogen to replace LNG. There's no real detailed plan that would describe how we would achieve that, given the political realities and environmental concerns and, you know, likely to be raised. And so, really, you know, our concern is, you know, we're getting put onto a path where we're going to be locked into this very harmful fuel source that's going to be very, ever more vulnerable to price volatility, to supply chain disruptions, and also to, in finer details, right, we're going to rely on this single offshore site to receive this, the gas that's going to take, it's going to be super vulnerable to natural disasters, to sabotage, even to, like, you know, targeting as a national security issue. So, all that to say, lots of questions that need to be asked. We support this resolution because it gives us time to really explore, explore those questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We also have testimony in support from the Green Party of Hawaii, the COE, Climate Action Coalition, Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party, Climate Protectors Hawaii, and if we use the designations on the website, 24 individuals in support, two in opposition, and one with comments. Is there anyone else who would like to submit testimony on this measure? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Chair Loane.
Kind of getting, running out of time here, but I guess, since the consumer advocate's not here, Mr. Curtis. If we, I'm just curious on your opinion on this, like, even if we put aside concerns about climate change entirely for purposes of this conversation and just talk about impact to Hawaii's ratepayers, if LNG were to be, you know, adopted as a strategy going forward, I mean, my understanding is that it would take a lot of investment in infrastructure, and presumably, we have a date of 20, you know, presumably, that would take quite a long time to accomplish. We have a date of 2045, after which it would become a stranded asset, and there's all this sort of talk floating around the rumor mill about LNG, but nobody's seen any concrete proposal with numbers attached to it. I know Energy Office put out a report, which I have a lot of questions about, so, like, what's your take on it? I mean, I just don't, I, like, putting aside the concerns about climate change or the idea of using something as a bridge fuel that we lock ourselves into inadvertently, it just doesn't seem to me that it would do anything but raise costs on Hawaii's ratepayers, which we cannot do.
We too have concerns about the report, especially because it appears to have been written to agree with a pre-selected outcome.
Yeah.
The cost data is really questionable, and when you consider the fact that LNG is then going to go for green hydrogen, as Sierra Club pointed out, that's a cumulative impact of the original proposal. So, the environmental impact statement would have to look at not only the LNG, but also the green hydrogen.
The green hydrogen from, from where?
From where.
Made with what energy?
Involving what? So, we would expect litigation on each of the steps, from DLNR for the water, the piping system on land, the air permit, and this explosive EIS would all take up enormous amounts of time and be a true waste of time, especially when it turns out in the end it wouldn't work.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we're going to go straight into decision-making on these measures, and I'm going to ask. So, on the first measure, HCR 54, HR 54, HCR 58, we're going to amend page three of this measure to include the ED of DCCA or his or her designee as a member of the working group, and also include the relevant subject matter chairs from the House and Senate. And then on page four, line 17, we're going to extend the due date of this report of findings to 2027.
Can I make a request to just include a note in the committee report that the Energy Security Special Fund or HNEI Special Fund might be potential sources of funding should this working group require funding?
Good idea.
Look at putting that in the budget.
So requested. Members, are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Chair for the vote.
All right, we haven't done this in a while. Voting on HR 54, HCR 58, recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Rep Kahaloa.
Aye.
Rep Kush.
Aye.
And Reps Quinlan and Ward are excused. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. On HR 63, HCR 70, we're going to adopt the following amendments. We're going to move the, previously, the 10th whereas clause, so that is now the 8th whereas clause, so just moving things around a little bit. We're going to modify the 7th whereas clause to use the word net to modify zero emissions So, reconvening and completing the amendments on HR 63, HCR 70, at the end of the be it resolved clause, we're going to add, which will, quote, "which will require future actions from multiple other entities, including the legislature, airlines, and fuel producers, manufacturers, and distributors." Members, are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, Chair for the vote.
All right, voting on House Resolution 63, HCR 70, recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, noting Reps Quinlan and Ward excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Seeing none, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Moving to HR 102, HCR 106, I'd like to pass this out as is. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Chair for the vote.
All right, voting on HR 102, HCR 106, recommendation is to pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Reps Quinlan and Ward excused. Any no's or reservations? Seeing none, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. HR 181, we'd also like to pass this out as is. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Chair for the vote.
Okay, voting on HR 181, HR 202, recommendation is to pass unamended. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Reps Quinlan and Ward excused. Any other no's or reservations? Seeing none, recommendation is adopted.
And on HR 202, HCR 210, this is an important resolution, and we're going to defer decision-making until Thursday so we can do a little bit more work on it. Are there any questions about that temporary, short-term deferment? Nope. Okay. So, seeing none, those are all the measures before this committee at this time. We have no more business before this committee. This hearing is adjourned.